Okay, is everybody hearing me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I was working there for just a second. So we will call to order the study session at what's like 6 o'clock. If everyone would please rise where they are at right now and join with me the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. If we could have roll call, please.
Certainly. Councilperson Duprey, your agents. Still connecting. Ross? You're muted, Ms. Ross. Here. Salsito?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
Mayor Carnes?
Here.
Hopefully, Councilman Higgins will be in in a second. Mr. Higgins, are you here?
I am here.
All right. Please tell us all.
He is here. So, purpose of today's meeting is a study session for water rates, Department Traffic Division, and maintenance of alleys. So, we have a short hour and 25 minutes to get through these three topics. So, we're going to jump right in with the water rates. And James, are you on the -- you are? I think we're going to go straight. The plan is to go straight to Plant Moran and Kristen Hunt. Is that as good as that? Any opening?
That's perfect. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So, we have a change in the water rate has to do with some of the monies that were allocated to us from the feds. And so, that may have changed the anticipated raise that we were going to have to make in the rates. But I'll let Kristen Hunt from Plant Moran go ahead and start us off with that. So Kristen, thank you for being here tonight, and you can go at any time.
All right. Thank you much, very much, Mayor and Council. I have with me this evening my colleague, Brian Camiller. He was with us the last time that we went over those water and sewer rate studies and doing the projected rates. We do have an update this evening because of the influx of federal funding. So with that, I will turn it over to Brian to do a little refresher where we were before and kind of show you the updates of what we have to offer now with the new funding.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Kristen. Good evening, everyone. So we have a PowerPoint. It's -- I took the same one that we discussed many months ago and updated it for a few different scenarios. So as has been mentioned already, you're getting a substantial amount of money from the federal government through the ARPA program. And one of the eligible uses is water and sewer infrastructure. So the city has an opportunity to spend some or all or none of that amount of money to put toward the long list of capital improvement projects related to water and sewer that you have. Now, I met with Lisa and with James a couple of months ago. We went through some of the different scenarios. And so, when we get toward the end of the slide deck, you'll have what we had agreed upon was the best option eight or nine months ago, and then three different options for raising rates while utilizing $13 million of the ARPA money. So it's a little bit of this way is too hot, this way is too cold, the third is in the middle, it feels just about right in terms of how much you raise it in year one, how much money you begin to accumulate. And remember, at the end of the model, you end up in the same place. So whether you raise rates, you know, we called it a jumpstart rate. So you have a jumpstart in year one. Now whether that's a big jumpstart or a little jumpstart, that's going to affect your annual increases thereafter. But at the end of the day, if you agree on doing the same five, 10, however many projects, you need the same amount of money. It's just a question of how quickly do you generate it, how soon do you collect it, how soon do you spend it? So I'm not going to go through the entire deck at the same level of detail that we did a few months ago, but I think it does bear a little bit of a refresher course. So if it's okay with you, I am going to share my screen. Can you see that?
We can.
Yes.
All right. Very good. So in summary, so this is -- this slide is the same. You have a substantial amount of capital improvements that need to get done. And the analogy we used last time was if your water and sewer system is like your house, some things cost a lot of money to fix, some things are relatively inexpensive. But for your house, you've got a lot of big ticket items that need replacing. Following the analogy, roof windows, heating and cooling, and replacing your cement. So that's kind of the grand slam of things that could happen to your house. You have a similar situation with your water and sewer system. Millions upon millions of dollars, some lead line, some sewer related. There's a lot to it that needs to get done. Now, you have options, of course. You can always finance things over 10 or 20 or 30 years, but you end up paying interest if you borrow or issue long-term debt. And then you also have this combination, as I mentioned before, of fix and variable rates. And the -- they generate cash, and whether you do a high fix, high variable, and you kind of play with it, the increase is going to change. And it's going to change for individual customers in different ways. Low-volume users, a fixed fee impacts them more significantly. High-volume users, the fixed fee is a lesser component of their rates. They would be impacted more by changing the commodity rate. So there's always, you know, some folks are more or less impacted, but everybody's bill, it's kind of a unique snowflake. It just depends on their mix of fixed and variable usage. We talk about cash needs. So these models are calculating purely on what cash do you need to bring in in order for you to pay your vendors, pay your employees, buy your water, pay for your sewer treatment. We're not accumulating money to fund depreciation. If we were to do that, that would actually more than likely be a larger rate increase than by using the cash basis accounting model. This is a 10-year model. It's a little bit longer than what we normally utilize. Reason being, the longer you go out, the more your assumptions tend to compound on themselves. But given a substantial amount of capital improvements that you need to have happen, and if we did it over, say, five years or six years, it would be very difficult to raise rates as quickly as you might need. And then there's this fee terminology change. So you currently have a meter charge on your bills. We've replaced that with a readiness to serve. It's still a fixed fee, whatever we call it. But the idea behind readiness to serve is that before anybody turns on their faucet, there are costs that are incurred by the city in order to make the water and sewer system available to be used. So even if you don't use the water, there's still a meter reader, there's still sending a bill, there's a stamp included, there's insurance, there's people that have to get paid in order to fix leaks as they spring up. And even if you didn't use water, it was available to you. And so this readiness to serve charge is going to cover a portion, a fraction, not the whole thing, but a fraction of some of those fixed administrative costs that benefit the users whether or not, or depending on how much of the water that they use. We talk about working capital. And so, we're trying to achieve X amount of money in your bank at the end of the model. That's our target working capital. And there is some real mathematics behind what that target is. We're not just pulling a number out of thin air. So when we're setting utility rates, there are four potential buckets of working capital that we need to fill. Now, in your case, we're only going to do three of the four buckets. The fourth bucket is planned capital reserve. Because you're doing so much capital in a relatively short period of time, it doesn't make sense to save even more money for eventual capital replacement. You're going to be raising rates enough to cover a substantial amount of improvements. And so, we don't want to burden the system customers anymore than the city has to. So we're going to fill the first three buckets. Bucket number one, the operating reserve. You have to have enough money in the bank to pay your people, to pay your vendors. And the fact is, you pay your people, your vendors faster than your customers pay you. So since you bill on a quarterly basis, a 90-day basis, we want to make sure that you have one extra month of operations so that the city has enough money to pay your people, pay your vendors, while you wait for some customers to take time to pay you. Bucket number two, one year of debt service payments. So you have some debt service, there's going to be even more of it as you draw on some of these SRF loans. And so, this bucket gets emptied twice a year as you make a debt payment. So as soon as you empty the bucket making a debt payment, you have to start filling it back up again so that six months from now, you've got enough money to make the next debt payment. So at the end of each fiscal year, we want to have enough money in this bucket to pay for next year's debt service payment. And then number three, the emergency capital replacement, also known as the oops, something broke fund. You're going to have water main breaks, you're going to have emergencies that you don't have time to go to the bond market or to go borrow in some other way. You have to have enough cash on hand today to fix these problems. And so when oops, something breaks, we need to be able to spring into action. So for the oops, something broke fund, it's a percentage of the net book value of your existing capital assets. And so, we use 2% to 5%, I believe, for you, we use 2%. I'll have to double check that before we're done. But it's not that much money. The debt service payment, the operating reserve, those are the more significant components. And it needs to be pointed out, you're really starting, or at least when we did this model originally, you're starting with next to nothing in terms of working capital. So if you don't have working capital to start, and you start raising rates, but year one, year two, year three capital improvements are substantial, you're going to have to then borrow money from the general fund to subsidize water and sewer until such time as your rates year over year start to compound and you start to generate a positive cash flow. Your general fund does not have the means to subsidize water and sewer operations. Some places have enough. So, you know, if you had $10 million of fund balance in general fund, it would be okay to lend a million bucks or $2 million bucks to water and sewer. But your general fund doesn't have that. So that is not an option available to you. Hence, this is why we have that jumpstart rate where we have to accelerate your rate increase early on so you begin to generate a positive cash flow in order to start these capital improvements. So I'm not going to go into great detail on the steps of the model. I will point out that we talked about this a lot several months ago, but the city of Lincoln Park has very high water loss. So you buy so much water from the Great Lakes Water Authority, and as it goes through your pipes, 37% of it disappears before it gets to your customers. That's a very high loss. Standard is probably closer, industry standard, you know, is somewhere between like 8% to 12%. So the fact that you're losing 30% of the water before you sell it is a tremendous burden on the city. You really need to resolve that issue, figure out where it's leaking. And it may be leaking in many, many places because you have an older system. The faster you can make these improvements, the faster you will plug the leaks or replace the parts of the system that are leaking. And that will literally be money that you're no longer flushing down the toilet. So we need to get that corrected, and that, over time, will mitigate the need for additional rate increases. You do have some SRFs. Those are our state revolving fund loans. We are originally, in the first model, those were going to be taken out in bigger chunks early on. But because you have this ARPA money at your disposal, and theoretically, you're spending that ARPA money over the next five years, it means that you don't need to borrow down on the SRF as quickly as we thought originally. So part of the model is taking that SRF, borrowing, and spreading it out over eight years instead of, I think it was the first four years of the model. So, you know, in total, you're still borrowing the 8 million, but instead of doing it, you know, in a short period of time, you're stretching it out. We've talked about the significant capitalality that you have to do, 78 million of lead line replacements, 37 million of sanitary sewer improvements that Eagle is mandating that you do, and then another 9 million of other projects over the 10 years. That's a lot of work that needs to be done. And when you're starting with no money, no working capital at the beginning of the model, obviously, you have to raise rates significantly in order to generate that cash. So we talked a little bit about the readiness to serve charge. We have not changed anything related to that from the original model to what we're going to talk about today. So the current model is set to recoup 13.5% of your administrative operational costs. We could have picked any number between 0 and 100%. There's no right or wrong there, and any of it would have been fine. But the more the fixed charges, the more your low-end volume users, i.e. fixed income seniors, the worse they would be impacted. And so, keeping it at this 13.5%, it does raise the quarterly charge for most people from $2.55 to $9.21 per quarter. But if we were to raise it more, it would be significantly more impactful for those low-volume users. So this is more of talking about the water loss, that you are buying more and selling less, which tells us that the water loss has been getting worse over time. Five years ago, it was around 20%. Now it's 37. Once water starts leaking, it usually only gets faster, it does not typically slow down. So the model is assuming that sales are going to continue to decline. Part of that is population-driven, part of that is, you know, low-flow plumbing, new high-tech or higher-tech plumbing is more water-efficient. But the idea is that your sales are going to continue to decline for a few years and then level off. There has to be some bottom to the amount of water that you sell. Your city's going to continue to exist, there's still going to be however many thousands of people, however many thousands of customers. I'm sure they're going to continue to wash their clothes, take showers, and cook. So there's got to be some of them. Might it level off later, might it level off earlier, of course? These are assumptions. And so as you go through the future years, we'll be updating those assumptions, or the city will be updating those assumptions. And hopefully, that sales number will level off and possibly start to increase at some point. Okay, we've talked about working capital. So the lead line replacement, so, you know, in the original model, we ended up pulling it out completely and saying that it's so substantial, the amount that you're going to have to do, that the rate increases that we're talking about are astronomical. Compared to where we were, you know, before the ARPA money, it was basically, if you were going to pay for the lead line replacement over 20 years, you were looking at doubling your rate almost immediately. It was going to cost somewhere around $40 per unit sold every year over 20 years to come up with 78 million bucks. And so we were completely excluding it. And under the assumption that you're going to have to figure out whether it's a property tax, some kind of judgment levy, whether it is issuing bonds, whether it's going through the state, perhaps the state would participate, perhaps the county would participate, a lot of unknowns. And so, that is still something that you're going to have to resolve because you're not getting $78 million of ARPA money. So while it is significant, it's not going to completely take care of this problem. And so there's still going to be some amount of lead line that you're going to have to figure out a funding source for. And it can be raising rates, but it is, you know, tremendously significant if you're going to do it solely through rates. All right. So this slide you saw before. This was the calculation where we left off that this was what was the right thing to do for the city in the early version of the model. So it was this new readiness to serve charge, recouping 13.5% of your administrative costs. In the first year, the jumpstart rate for both water and sewer was going to be 25%. So right out of the gate, add 25% to the year bills plus that eight-ish dollar per quarter fixed charge increase. In years two through 10, water's actually okay. The water rate was not going to have to go up any further. Sewer would continue to go up 8% per year. Now what this graph is showing, this blue line, is that working capital is, even though you're generating a lot more cash flow because you're jump-starting the rates, you're also doing capital outlay right out of the gate as well. So you're bringing in more, but you're spending more. And so we really don't start to accumulate working capital until about year six, and then by the end of year 10, we get to a little over 4 million, which is our target. That's filling up the three buckets that we talked about before. So this was a viable option without ARPA. Now, the next three slides are going to show variations on this with using $13 million of ARPA money. So new option number one. Actually, I'm sorry, 14.5 million. 2 million for water, 11 million for sewer, and 1.5 million for lead line. That's 1.5 out of 78. RTS is the same, 13%. Instead of it being 25% jumpstart for both water and sewer, it's a 20% jumpstart for water, and it's still 25% for sewer. Still no increase in years two through 10 for water, and the sewer increase goes from 8% to 5.5%. Now, you see right from the beginning, you start to accumulate working capital, that's the blue line. In the previous model, I'll flashback to that for a second, you were hovering around zero for the first six years. Now, right out of the gate with new option number one, you started accumulating right away, and you get to about 6 million come year eight. And then by year 10, it's back down to that little over 4 million that is our target. So this is a viable option. It could work, but why -- I mean, you're raising rates significantly, so why accumulate more than you necessarily need, you know, and then to follow that up with starting to burn that cash in years nine and 10? So this, what this tells me is that the jumpstart of 20% and 25% is probably a little heavy because we don't need to have the working capital jump out of the gate like this. So then that led us to the next option, new option number two. It's the same 14.5 million of ARPA, 2 for water, 11 for sewer, 1.5 for lead line. The jumpstart goes down to 10% right out of the gate for both water and sewer. Now, instead of no increase in future years for water, you need 1.9% per year, every year for the 10 years. Sewer goes back up to 8%. Now, you hover under a million bucks for the first five years, and then you start to accelerate. This is a viable option. It's similar to where we ended up in the first version of the model, but you still have a lot of lead line to do. And this does not give you any ability to do it. And it really, you're cutting it close. Having less than $1 million of working capital in water and sewer for the first five or six years, it gives you the potential for a problem. If there's a catastrophe, if there's another significant capital improvement project that has to get done, that we aren't thinking about right now, you don't have the money to do it yourselves in water and sewer, you'd have to borrow from general fund, and we already talked about general fund not being able to do that or not being able to afford it. So we went back to the drawing board and came up with a number three, something that gives you a little bit more security, but not as heavy as new option number one. So new option number three. This is the same 13.5%. It's the same 14.5 million of ARPA. The first year jumpstart is 15%. So we started at 25, we ended up going down to 10, now we're at 15, we're in the middle. And you still have about a 1% increase per year in water, and the sewer rate is down from 8 to a little over 7. You can see from the blue line, you do start to accumulate some working capital right out of the gate, but the slope of the line isn't that severe. So you're generating a positive cash flow year over year. Every year, you're putting a little bit more in the bank so that eventually, come years eight, nine, 10, you're right about at your target, that little over 4 million bucks. So when I look at all three of these new options, this is the one that feels best to me. Doesn't mean you have to go for it, but this is the one that feels best to me because it provides you with positive cash flow every year. And if something unforeseen becomes foreseen, and we have to deal with it, you have some money in the bank to deal with it. So to me, this is the best of both worlds. The jumpstart gets you into the position of having the cash surplus, and it provides you with the security of having some amount of money in the bank fairly early on. Still need to deal with the majority of the lead line replacement. So that's still another significant cost that you can either bond or borrow from the state, or perhaps Wayne County would be looking to spend some of their ARPA money to help you. I know they've met with most communities in Wayne County so far, and they're asking for, you know, shovel-ready projects that perhaps you can do together. Because they got a lot of ARPA money too, and they're looking for ways to spend it. So on this slide, this is assuming you liked new scenario number three. This is what the, this blue table is what the impact would be to your customer's bill. So if you're paying $50 per quarter right now, you would immediately jump to $68 per quarter, and the year after, it would go to $72. So the year-two rate increase combined for water and sewer is between 4% and 5%. With that 15% jumpstart in the middle, or excuse me, jumpstart in year one, with that 15% is on the commodity rate, you still have that $8 per quarter on the readiness to serve charge. So if you're a low-volume user, your increase is 37% in year one. But it's, you know, $18.53. So the percentage sounds a lot worse than the actual dollar amount. If you're a higher-volume user, if your bill is 300 bucks a quarter, your bill goes up 27% in the first year. That's $8 a quarter on the readiness to serve plus the commodity. Year two, and every year thereafter, goes up about 4.5%. Year two and every year thereafter goes up about 4 and 1/2%. So really, everybody in years two through 10, their rate increase is somewhere between 4 and 5%. The difference is the readiness to serve also goes up, but that should only go up at about the rate of inflation because it's tied to your administrative costs. So it's, you know, tied to your insurance and your personnel, repairs and maintenance, that sort of thing. So as long as your, the expenses that are under your control, the ones that are in-house, not Great Lakes water, not sewer treatment, but your in-house internal costs, if you hold those to inflation, your RTS only goes up by inflation. So that, excuse me, that was the old rate increase. The new one is still, you know, it's a little bit longer in year one, but year two is still just north of 4% a year. So bottom line, Brian, what are you telling us? What I'm telling you is 14 and 1/2 million dollars of ARPA money, it goes a long way. But when it boils down to the impact to your customers, because you have so much capital improvement to do, and you don't have any cash in the bank now, you still need a pretty significant rate increase. So if you were thinking, we're going to get this ARPA money, we're going to put it into water and sewer, we're home free, we don't have to significantly raise rates, that's not the case. The ARPA money's good, thank you federal government, but you're still going to have significant challenges, and you're going to have to raise rates accordingly. That's all I have in terms of prepared comments. I know I just dumped a lot of information on you. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate it.
I'm sorry, through the chair, Your Honor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just curious if we could get a copy of that PowerPoint.
Yes, definitely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Hey, Brian, you worked out the cost for the third scenario there, but did I miss it, or did you do a cost for the second scenario?
On a per customer basis?
Yes.
I do have that, it's not in the PowerPoint. But it's really, it's negligible, I mean, you're going to, it's still going to be double-digit rate increases in year one. Now, if you're at 27% with scenario three, then maybe it goes up to 32%. I mean, it's, you're still talking about a big number. But the reason why number three, to me, is the best, is because you start to generate positive cash flow right out of the gate. And it gives you the security that if you do have an unforeseen additional capital improvement project, you're going to have some amount of money in the bank to help you through that without having to borrow from general fund. The other scenario one, you had the same, but you were actually generating money too fast. Scenario two, you didn't have enough. So number three is like, you know, it's the three bears, the porch is too hot, it's too cold, third one is just right.
Okay. James, I would like to see us taking the three scenarios and then plugging in, say, four different actual water bills that go out there for the high use, and then the low use, and the in-between, and see what, over the course of the years, that we're going to be expecting the people to pay. I know that we're going to have to, we're going to have to do some, but I want to go in with our eyes wide open as what it's exactly going to be costing. And when you figure in all the different things that go in, how much is that water bill going to be? I mean, if somebody's facing $280 every three months now, are we then going to be looking at them having a $400 bill when everything is said and done? If that's what has to happen, but I want to be upfront with the people right away before we vote on this or make a decision, I want to know exactly what it's going to be costing, or as close as possible.
We can do that for you.
Okay. Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Those were very good points, and I think, I just want to add, I think that that's exactly what we want, what I would like to see. Because the water, our water bills are not just water. So they're going to, you know, they're going to go up, yes, for the water section, but we're going to have garbage pretty soon, you know, a new contract that, you know, I'm sure there's going to be rate increases there for rubbish and recycling. So, you know, you're right, our water bills are going to be high.
Well, we are not in a good position as been, Brian has outlaid for us a few months ago, and then again today. We're not getting better, and we can't put our heads in the sand and just ignore it either. We have to do something, or we're going to be in serious trouble here in 10 years without just something major happening. But we definitely have to get our heads around this 37% loss, so. And then James, we need to get with, Hennessy and Kazoo and work out a plan of how we can, what we're going to do with this, how we can find out where this water is going from.
Yes, Mayor, if I may real quick, we are supposed to be part of a program through Great Lakes Water Authority through partnership with them. Should be starting any time now to actually start doing some investigation into the water loss.
But when the loss goes from 20% to 40%, and, you know, it's getting to the point where half of everything that we're paying for is being wasted, and we can't survive this way.
Oh, absolutely not.
So what is the, I don't want, Brian, what, when would all these things, when would we need to make our determination for this, for our decision on which of the options we're going to be taking?
Honestly, as soon as possible. I mean, the quicker that you start raising rates, the faster you start to accumulate cash and start to generate a cash flow surplus. The longer you wait, this is just going to get worse.
Okay. How long would it take to plug in those numbers and give us, I'm going back to James and Lisa now at this point. How long would it take us to get examples of bills? I mean, you could use mine as an example, if you're looking for...
So whether they do that with that, or I have, you know, that blue table from one of the last slides, I can duplicate that, you know, this week with if your bill is 50, if it's 100, if it's 200, under all three scenarios.
Okay. Then that is a good idea, but I would also like to have everything else plugged in that's on the water bill that you'd be looking at, such as the garbage, the recycling and everything. So when that, everything that comes in that quarterly bill, I'd like to see it affected with that rate. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, we can do that.
And then in reality, then we'd need to, it would be possible to then make our determination at the next meeting, what is it, the 20th?
That would be the 20th, and that has been kind of our internal planned timeline, was to do this presentation tonight, find out what more information you guys would need, and also give the public a chance to try and digest this before going in, making the decision on the 20th, and then hopefully implementing rates at the start of the next quarter, which would be October 1.
Okay, well, if you could, if you could get that information to us and be able to digest it before the meeting on the, before the meeting on the 20th, to give us a better shot. And then we're still going to have to be going out and announcing why it is that we have to do these things. We're going to have to do town halls, we're going to have to, because this is, even at the, if you go to the lowest, this is going to be a significant increase in costs here. It's going to be, we have to do it, but I mean, it's going to be significant. Okay, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I can just get clarification from Mr. Prezan on that water loss study that Hennessy was able to get us into with, I think it was a grant. If you could just tell me, I know back then when they told us about it in that one study session, they had already accepted us, and I thought we were in. So are we looking at now getting the results of that, or are we still waiting months for those results?
John Kazoo could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we are waiting for the scheduling to actually start it. As we are in, it's just a matter of getting with Great Lakes Water and getting it all hired out to do it. But it is just a scheduling thing at this point.
Okay, so we actually haven't begun the actual study?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from council? I didn't want to be the only one talking here. Lily and I. I'm not, I'm not hearing anything.
I'm sorry, that's my fault. Through the chair, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
The thing that we just heard from Brian, is that going to make basically the water sewer self-sufficient then from the general fund? I mean, the increases and the stock for the, you know, the extra money and the increases every year, is that going to make basically the water and sewer department that solve up where it will not, except for emergencies, obviously, but except for that, they will be able to stand on their own income, if you want to call it, or their own rates and that stuff, without then taking money from the general fund? Am I wrong?
No, that's exactly it. You go stand on your own without having to borrow any cash from general fund.
Okay, that's what I want to know, because when you turn the chair to Brian, when you made that study and talked about it, that's the same thing that Ford Motor Company did years and years and years ago with the charge East Department for a truck, for a tool, and everything else, and made them self-sufficient, where their income, when they charged the customer internally, went against the outcome of what they were charged for their equipment, in those Ford Motor Company. It was like to see how the income would go against the outcome. And it sounds like what we're doing here is charging that 13% for example, for the administrative. We're charging everything that goes into the water and sewer fund so that it goes into the rates to get paid out of the sufficient grants. Am I correct in that? In other words, the rates are paid for all that 13% percent administrative and home rest and stuff.
Well, so you're still going to have, I believe that your water and sewer fund pays general fund in administrative charge, because, you know, part of James' time, part of Lisa's time, you know, there are general fund employees that do things that benefit water and sewer. But after all that is said and done, you're going to have a positive cash flow in water and sewer so that you don't have to borrow any cash from general fund. Where you're at right now with having basically no working capital, you know, the next bond payment that you would make, you'd have to borrow temporarily, short-term, from general fund, and then, you know, you've got cash flowing back and forth between the funds as you collect and as you pay some of those big ticket bills. But you're right, water and sewer needs to stand on its own. It's an enterprise fund. Enterprise means like a business, and it doesn't need to have subsidies coming in. You have the ability to charge your customers whatever you need to in order to pay the bills and provide the service.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Your Honor. I'm all set. Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
If we find the, if we can improve the water loss from 37% down to a 20%, how would that affect the bills? If we could actually make 20% of that water loss go to rank, would that have an impact on us?
It would have a substantial impact. I don't have the, you know, percentage or the dollar quantified, but every dollar of water that you're not losing is a dollar that you don't have to charge your customers. So if you get your water loss down from 37% to say, you know, 12 or 15, that's a couple million bucks a year that you don't have to charge your customers.
Well, it would make sense to make that a priority as far as getting that taken care of to pay for something that I'm not getting. I think that shouldn't really be looked in too heavily. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I'm not, I'm not hearing anything. Brian, thank you. Kristen, thank you. And then we, going down that road here in a couple, in a couple of weeks. But thank you for putting the time into that and for agreeing to help us in getting the rest of the numbers going.
Thanks for the opportunity. I'll send the PowerPoint over to James, and he can distribute it to the members of council.
Yeah, very good. Appreciate that. Then we'll move on to our next study session and topic. I think the, the one in time-wise, when it was organizing, was the, the first one was the Police Department Traffic Division. So we'll jump ahead with that. When the chief was at the meeting, I think it was a month or so ago, he came up with a little spreadsheet, not spreadsheet, but presentation, a little, about the things going on, on the department. I think James shared that with all of council, council today earlier. So as we go into this, do we need to hear from the chief starting out with, or James, we start with you? To get this conversation started?
So I really don't have much more to add. Do you think the chief's presentation, which actually now was two months ago, was pretty comprehensive, laid out the issues we have at this point? I'd turn it over to him if he has anything more he'd like to add to that discussion.
Okay, chief, are you with us? I thought I saw your name.
I'm here.
All right, is there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Is there anything you want to add before we go into discussion of the study session?
No, I don't have any other stats to add to what I already presented at the last meeting. If anybody's got any questions or concerns about any of those, I'm here to answer them.
Okay. The mover on this, Councilman Kelsey, that was you, correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, so why don't, we'll start off with you.
Sure. As much as you know, when we looked at the presentation, the presentation was given by the chief, is that they already showed officers that they haven't got the complement they have. They also talked about the fact that the actual traffic division was eliminated many, many years ago, when they didn't have enough officers, and the cuts went, and so on and so forth. Talking to the chief, myself and Councilman Ross, we talked about the fact that what it would take to put officers back into the traffic division. Most of you have noticed that we've got a lot of complaints about traffic issues, whether it be go-karts, or mini bikes, or people speeding through stop signs, or just plain speed. I mean, we've all got them, I know I have. We've all seen the videos. And going back to talking to chief, he was talking about the fact that it would take, in his opinion anyways, would take three officers at $157,000, $157,000, I think was the number, to staff that division. It would not take any more patrol cars or anything else, you could have an Alphabell, but that would pay for the retention and the health benefits, and et cetera, et cetera, for officers. We talked to him and said, well, if you can't get officers now, what difference does that make, you know, if you can't get them now, even if we gave them, we couldn't get them? His comment was very insightful. He says, well, if the council agrees to give it to me when we fill our quota now, then I can phase those officers in one by one when we get them to start the traffic division. He said, but without the council's approval or account, without the money being budgeted, not spent, but budgeted, he says, there's no use even talking about it because when I get ready to turn around and fulfill my complement officers, patrol officers, and I go to have some patrolmen for the traffic division or however you set it up, he said, I get to go through the same process and presentations, and so forth. So my... So my comment to him was, what if we talk about taking the $157,000 per officer and put it like in an escrow account, which means that we're not spending it, because you don't even have the people for record, officers of a budget for. How about if we look at allocating X amount of money towards these officers, not spending it, but allocating it, and then as we get close to having the officers, which nobody knows when, we start driving that money to offset the sudden cost of increase of the officers? That's what I come up with. Now, I hope anybody has the other, any other issues, but looking at the presentation, there are no more police people playing this up. There are no more. People are going and speeding, people are doing mini bikes, you name it, they're doing it. They can't patrol the area as it is, because I think they're three officers short, am I right, chief? Through the chair?
Uh, yes, sir. So we are down three with two officers that are off on illness, long-term.
All right, so through the chair, that basically we're down five, we haven't even got to the, talking about the safety of the traffic division. We also recently bought lasers for the officers, and it would be great if we had time to put them in the cars, use them on a regular basis. So basically, this is my, if you wanna call it, comment or my motion, is that we look at finding some way to fund these officers, even when it comes up. Now, that would be a funding issue with, with the city, to how we could fund that, because there's no use funding them right now, today, even if we agreed to, because you can't even get them. And according to the police, uh, Jay, he says, he says everything else, I mean, everything else would be included at today's prices, if you wanna call it. Personally, I think we need to do something. If we don't make the issue of safety a little bit more for the residents, we're not gonna have any residents besides worrying about raising rates, if they're not gonna feel safe where they down the street or whatever. Everybody that sees a car stolen through the stop sign. But I think it has to show a presence out there, plus the fact that, once you put a police presence out there, people tend to get that, and they tend to understand not to do what they're doing.
Okay, good.
You lost him.
Oh, we, we lost you first. I thought it was just me, so I was just...
He's not in there.
Uh, I think he's gone at the present time, or, or something.
Wait, maybe there he is.
There he is, he's back. You're muted, Larry.
Muted.
It dropped off.
There, there, are you there?
He's muted now, he's here, but he's muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, my, sorry about that, my internet connection went off. I guess it's getting kinda weird outside. But anyways, that was my thought process. I think it was time that we discussed it as a council. There's been a lot of concern from the residents, and their, the options are great on that, and that's where I'm at. So I think that we need to discuss the issue of how we can create a traffic division or some officers to at least patrol the streets in a traffic kind of sense, whether they do areas where they watch the stop signs, or areas where there's a lot of problems with people speeding, or whatever.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, we, we lost you, we lost you again. So basically then, what I was looking at, if it's, the cost is $150,000 per officer, then we're, we're talking about an additional half million dollars in personnel to the, to the Police Department that we'd be looking to, to do, if we were going to go along with that. So we have James and Lisa, before we have, go into further discussion, what, what funding options would we, we have for this, James?
Um, well, so in this, we're talking general fund money here. Our general fund is pretty, it's, it's their most pressured fund, they're all really heavily pressured. But in order to fund this, we would either have to raise revenue somewhere, or we would have to decrease expenses somewhere else. The, the general fund right now, Lisa can correct me, I think for this current budget year, we are balanced. If we had, if we were budgeting these positions, it would change that. We would then, our budget would be roughly half a million dollars in deficit, that we would have to be budgeting to use general, the general fund fund balance. Because, because from the, the budgeting standpoint, it doesn't matter if we spend it or not, once it's budgeted, for that year, it's encumbered. And the only way to change anything would be to do it through a budget amendment. There's not a whole lot of options to raise revenue outside of raising fees, or raising, you know, nobody wants to talk about it, but raising taxes. The only, the only other option is to try and decrease expenses somewhere else, and in the general fund, between public safety and pensions, we're already spending about 66 cents on every dollar of revenue.
Through the chair? Or James, it's $157,000, $157,000 for three officers, not half a million dollars for three officers, am I right?
No, it's $157,000 apiece, for three.
A piece for three?
Yes. That's the total cost of an officer.
Annually?
Annually, $157,000.
Each.
Through the chair, Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
Listen, you still, Maureen, you still got the door?
No, I'm, I'm down.
First of all, I apologize, my internet also passed out at home, so I'm a little liable at this time, but I'm just brainstorming, bear with me on this one real fast. I know we have reserved officers, right? What about hiring a couple of part-time officers where you don't pay benefits? Maybe officers from Wyandotte or Woodhaven who wants to spend four hours of the day in Lincoln Park at a, at a fixed cost, where there's no benefits? He just patrols and looks for speeding dune buggies down the street, and go-karts, and kids spraying graffiti on windows. Have we, um, look at that, that avenue there? Where there's no benefits, or just...
Really not gonna be an option for us. If you go on Michigan State's website, it's called MCOL, there's probably close to 50, if not more, Police Department's hiring full-time people. There's, you're not gonna get anybody to come in and work part-time, especially come in and work in Lincoln Park. That's not gonna be an option, unfortunately, for us. If you look at what these officers are gonna be actually doing, they're gonna be out there enforcing traffic, enforcing the complaints that we get, so that, um, what they're, the work they're gonna be doing is writing tickets. And if you look at, you know, just to get an idea of what, if they wrote approximately five tickets a day, they would basically pay for their wage at, at five days a week. I've, I've already looked down the numbers, and they would basically pay for themselves at five tickets a day. It's not that we're making them pay, get out there to do that, but that's what they're, that's what the, that's what, those are pay tickets, and that's, I mean, that's basically what they're out there to do, is to enforce the fractions. So it would, it would take a lot of strain of the budget.
But can you, can you budget that and anticipate it? I guess that's just the question. We know that the, the officers would be generating funds, so is that, is there any way to actually equate that into, into our budget projections? As far as what the revenue would be for the officers?
Well, you can anticipate that that's what would be brought in, but the collection rate on that, correct me if I'm wrong, James, I mean, that seems to be where a lot of our struggles are right now, is blocking the ticket revenue.
Yeah, absolutely.
Through the chair, by the way.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I lost my internet connection, I'm on my phone, I apologize. I missed some of the conversation, but, correct me if I'm wrong, if we get the sewer department up and running, because we should, and we take care of some of the heavy projects, it will eliminate some of the stress on the general fund. And I know that doesn't sound like a, a great idea, but the other thing is, we're never gonna go anywhere unless we generate some money, because according to the budget, we are strapped every year, year in and year out. And if we're not gonna be able to change anything, then we have a serious problem with the city. Because if we can't maintain the services that we provide, then who does? You know, I mean, if we're gonna charge revenues for their taxes and their water rates and that, you gotta maintain the services. And I understand that the, the general fund is, you get hard, but we're taking some of that money, one-time money, and we're gonna make a lot of improvements, hopefully, to eliminate a lot of issues that we seem to come up with all of a sudden. And that's just my comment, I mean, we, and I'll end up with that, and say, we can even do it, or not do it, that's up to the council.
Through the chair? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I think we do need ideas, but we need ideas to attract and retain officers at this point. We're not retaining officers, so if we bring new in and do all the training with the money, and so, how are we retaining them?
Through the chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, it was about that, uh, officers will have to write five tickets, uh, approximately a day, to bring back the money into the city, but is, is it not law, you cannot tell officers how many tickets they have to write, isn't that, isn't that against the law? I wanna make sure that I'm, I'm right on there.
No, if you have the people...
Yeah, we wouldn't have a ticket quota.
Go ahead, chief.
You're, you're talking about a ticket quota, we wouldn't have an actual quota, we would, we would get an agreement, that, an understanding that that's, you know, that our traffic department is out to write tickets, just like a, you know, a cement guy lives cement, that's, that's what they do, that's their job, so they would under, they would be an understanding, there would be an actual set number, where there'd be any issues.
No, in the past, they would have afternoon radar and day shift radar, in which they'd, you know, they'd write 40, 50 violations a day, if not more than that.
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Your Honor, if we could please have the chief tell us if he has any new ideas for recruitment? Because if every, you know, city throughout the state, and actually, well, across the nation, this is an issue, what can we do to, to recruit?
I don't want to, I don't mean to, I don't want to go into another direction, because we have another study session to go on that, so I would think that that would be something that the, the chief could give us at your next presentation, chief, when you come before us.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. And I know that we're short an officer now, because we've had that on our employment opportunities for a while.
Yeah, we're short five, actually.
Exactly. So how do we, how do we stay, I guess that's my biggest issue, is how do we stay fully staff? Because not only do we have them out, right, for injuries, or, I'm not sure what else, but there's also vacations and personal time. So this, you know, I know that we have, like I said, we have this one out, or, I mean, the one job opening. Where would that officer come in?
Well, come, then, I could answer for the chief a little bit, and then he can tell me if, if I'm incorrect. We have circumstances similar to that, then you plug in people from all over, and it ends up being that the road patrol is the one that, that bears the brunt of, of this in the form of, of overtime, canceled leave days, the ability not to take leave days, and such. So they're going through, and this, the shortness is being felt more by the, by the road officers than anybody else. And they're rising to the situation, and getting it, and getting it done, but, I mean, that's a lot of hours that they're working. Chief, am I talking out of school, or is that how it is?
No, sir, that's exactly it, and it's, I've got some numbers here for you, Mr. Turner. Over the last two years, just to give you an idea, officers responded to 63,654 calls of service, and made 6,386 arrests. So, yeah, that those shortage, you know, they, as tough as they are, those guys are out there hoping, and doing a great job.
But when they're always, when they're always short, it's hard to, I mean, your priority is answering calls for service from the citizens when they call, and going out and looking for the, the violations and things, or, I'm sure they're still doing that, because the numbers show it, on the amount of violations that are done each month, but they, again, the priority is on, on taking the calls, and they don't have as much opportunity to write the tickets as we would if all five officers, the two hell were back, and the three that were, three that were, we haven't filled yet.
Right. If, if we could get back to status quo where we were, you know, at full status, even if we could just get one guy in, I could show you the numbers, and, and kinda like slowly introduce the traffic unit, it, it shows the council that it will work, as far as, I, I, I feel like they would pay for themselves, but, you know, we could, we have to get back to our normals, our normal number, where we could be at full staff, and we're just a few short, obviously.
What is, what is full staff anymore, chief? How many officers, including yourself?
Forty-seven. Forty-seven.
So forty-seven, so in, forgive me for doing nation history here, but in ninety, or 2004, I think it was, that it was dropped down to 51, at which time there is a, a two-person traffic division. Or, no, it was dropped down to one.
Sounds about right.
Yeah. And before that, it was at, when the department, you're talking, you know, 2004, there was a 60-man, 60-officer department, and you had a, a three-person traffic safety division. Now, with the population gaining, as per the last census, is that going to give us any additional revenue? James, do you know, or we're just...
I'm sure there's, because state share revenue is, does have a population formula to it. CEDG money has a population formula to it. Is it significant enough that it will be hundreds of thousands of dollars? I, I kind of doubt it, but it will, I'm sure we'll see some kind of increase there.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, to speak up on that, do we have to get back up to 40,000 threshold for population permission sharing to go back up?
Okay. Let me have that, let me have that again, Lisa, the 40,000, what?
We have to go up to, I think it's 40,001, with 40,001 person, towards an increase...
The last census data, we're at 40,580-some, I believe.
That's what they're estimating?
Yeah, that's the, no, that's the figures that came back. We showed a...
I didn't know those came back yet.
We showed a, a 5% increase.
That's good news.
So what would that mean for additional revenue sharing for us?
I would have to look at the, it's all, I mean, about the, you know, they would have to see what it, what it would equate to.
Okay. Then, James, you had mentioned, we were speaking earlier, that, how the property values dropped in, in 2008, dropped in half, and even though we're at a period of time where it's 13 years later, we are still far from being back there due to the headly amendment that we're not able to, to recoup, that the taxes that we're paying now are not up to that 2004 level, not 2004, 2008 level.
It may or may not, so at, our... May I, if I may, so at our peak, at our peak, and I think it was 2008, we were at about $781 million in taxable value. We are now down to 601 million in taxable value. Our low point was 583 million, that was in 2012. So basically, for every mill we levy, the city's collecting about $180,000 less on that mill than we did in 2007. Also part of that, during this time, you know, since 2007, every year, the city has lost about 2.5 million in state shared revenue. That right there is really significant. And then our operating millage. Every time our taxable value increases, our operating millage has that headly rollback. Unfortunately, if we lose taxable value, there's no way to recollect a higher millage to even out. After Prop 8 was adopted in '94, we lost the ability to roll up. So as those millage, as those millage dollars go away, they don't come back.
So what options would we have to raise funds? Obviously, we're, the revenue sharing is a possibility, but what other options do we have?
Looking at different things that we could charge fees for service on, that's usually not terribly popular. Looking at potential grants, but you have to remember, potential grants are usually one-time funding sources, they're not things to look at for any kind of long-term funding. The biggest tool in our toolbox, though it's not popular, is some sort of millage increase. And this is kind of going into what I was planning to talk a little bit about during the alleys, but doing some sort of millage increase, whether it's to try and address some of our pension obligations, or whether it is specific for some other services, park maintenance, alley maintenance, to relieve some of this pressure on the general fund, might make the most sense at some point here. Because without it, there's very little we can, we can do as far as raising revenue.
We're not currently at our cap for the millage?
Well, we would have to do a vote, we would have to do an override vote. We would have to override the charter. It'd basically be a charter amendment.
Okay, so you guys need to look into that? I think that the consensus of the council here, not that I'm speaking for the other six, though, that they recognize the need for additional officers, and I don't know that anyone is opposed to having a traffic bureau or come back for additional traffic, traffic enforcement. So that may be, that plan for the, for the next year's budget, for at least, at least one, whatever we can, whatever we can manage there. Did I phrase there for a second, or is everybody hearing me?
Yes, you're doing fine.
All right, very good. So anything, anything else on the, on the police side of things?
To the Chair, James, is there some, you know, if we could look at that, if we had to do a millage, what kind of percentage to cover these things that we're looking at with additional offices for traffic and for the alleyways and that? Just to know, let us know basically where we are.
So, quick numbers here, our total millage rate for the city for the general fund. So our operating millage is at 15.33, approximately, and then our police and fire millage is at 3.43. So total, we are levying about 18.76 mills each year, which works out to approximately, should be about 10 million a year, give or take. For every mill we collect, we collect about $600,000. So depending on the level of service we wish to go after, and what we choose to try and fund through some kind of millage increase, that would depend what level of percentage increase we have to look at. To raise about $4 million, we are looking at, we're looking probably about six mills, which compares, and that's an additional third.
We're still under our limit, though. There is, what are we, half a mill or a mill that we could still assess?
I'd have to ask Lisa on that one. I did...
Lisa?
It's up to a little bit over a mill we could get, to open that, just say $200,000.
If it's only going that way, that would be able to include one, one officer then.
Right.
So I think at a minimum, we're looking to max out our, our millage rate to at least get started on the, on the traffic division and look towards, towards more. But we just got off of the water rate study here, we're looking at charging folks probably an additional $150, $200 a year through, through water. And we're looking at these additional fees, but it's the cost of doing business, I guess.
To the Chair, your honor.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
One last question. Because it was brought up that we're not, it's not that the tickets are not being written, it's that we're not able to collect down them, is there, help, just help me understand what exactly that means? Is it people are not paying their tickets? Are they getting dismissed? What is it, what does that mean?
We have the state attorneys here, he'd be best able to...
Where should I talk, Mayor?
Up here, up there, yes. Let me get out of the way, and he can climb in.
This microphone or this microphone? Just talk. There have been some modifications in the state statute, which previously provided fines and costs were due the date of plea or sentence. And under these modifications in the past year, the courts are not allowed to incarcerate anyone or suspend their license for not paying fines and costs. As a result, individuals have slowed down in their payment or completely defaulted on payments. We have sent out on behalf of the city hundreds of cases for collection of fines and costs, and it's a matter of time of getting everything together and finding out where the money is. Also instructed the prosecutors using the plea bargain to work out a certain type of a plea if there's a reduction, where it must be paid by 3 o'clock that day or defaults to the original charge, but you're a victim of the same thing all the other courts are in. That's a long way of explaining that you're in the same seat of government every other community is that runs a district court.
So last year, we were down 1 point. What was our revenue down last year from the, from the court, Lisa?
$1.5 million.
And as we're into this budget year, how are things going?
Right now, it's looking about the same.
I want to thank Mr. Zelenek for his answer.
Okay. Anything else as, as for the, for the police matters? We're at a point where I was going to plan on going till 7:25 with this. I don't think that we can address the alleys in that, in that specific time.
I can give a very short legal presentation, if you'd like, Mayor, or Council, a very fast one, and they can send me written questions.
Okay, then, all right.
Want me to come back up there?
Yeah, okay. This has to go to the cleaning, the maintaining of the alleys?
Yeah.
How we pay for it and such? Do we charge citizens?
Historically, pursuant to the ordinance that Council's aware of on the books now, the city has imposed the obligation of maintenance of their half of the alley, which would be weeds, trees, debris, weed trees, undergrowth, brush, things growing out of their back fence to the appurtened homeowner, just like you do with these in front of their property, which would be the small strip of grass that the city owns that they maintain. The city codified that in ordinance. Now, Council's also aware that there is a city charter provision giving the city the authority to maintain streets and alleyways, and that's exactly what they must do. So we've drawn a narrow distinction here, that if the alley is a, as you would call it, a boat navigable, or in a car traversable, or as Mayor would say, something you could drive a vehicle down, the city has to maintain that if it's providing egress and access. The city clerk's office did a survey of other communities here, and it seems nearly without exception, except in rare instances where they have one or two alleys, every other community imposes that burden of cleaning everything except the roadway, putting clinkers down, putting down pea gravel, putting down gravel, or shoring up the dirt so they can drive down the alley to get to their garage or access to their property if they have that right on the homeowner. And that's from Avonia to Dearborn to Wyandotte, and theoretically by ordinance here to Lincoln Park. The question that arises is, what does Council want to do? Because there is the argument that one could make, that the trees are growing up and the weeds and brush are sprouting up in the alleyway, and if the car can't get through the alleyway, what happens then? And if Council is truly concerned in doing it, you can't cherry pick an alley, you have to do them all. And if you're going to do that, you have to find resources to do it. There was one case where the ticket was thrown out, where a citation was given, and one of the district judges found that the city could not convey its duty onto the citizens. But it's the same thing like shoveling your sidewalk. The city owns the sidewalk, you don't shovel your walk, you get a ticket from the city. And that's the analogy we drew. The city elected at that time not to appeal the case, just like the city didn't appeal the time years ago we tossed out 200-and-some snow removal tickets because the city hadn't done a good job of shoveling their own property. So those are decisions made at court, but the judge didn't throw the ordinance out. I don't know who started that urban rumor or suburban rumor.
But a question, since that wasn't appealed at that time, and that court judge's ruling stands...
No, it's one case. I disagree, it's one case. I don't have a good habit of listening to judges anyways.
Could you approach, could you approach the Chief Judge with this specific scenario about what's going to happen with violations if they do issue them, in particular, has it dosed with the alleys?
Certainly. Now, the mayor wasn't in front of the microphone, we don't have the signer here, did everyone hear his question?
Yes.
All right, all right, that's good. Yes, I will approach the Chief Judge. And if Council has any specific questions, send them to me, but understand that you can adopt a different policy, where they may do it out in West Bloomfield or elsewhere, where you're going to maintain all of the alleys, which then becomes streets, and then you increase your liability to known hazards, as you would under the roads exception, the governmental immunity, but if you're prepared to do that, you've got to be prepared, Council, to expend the resources, first for policing and second for maintenance. And I just sat through the meeting on policing, I don't know that you're at that stage yet, so at this time, my advice would be, as would be for Mrs. Higgins, who has checked the situation in Dearborn, and she actually has an alley that she maintains, that is a traversable alleyway to her garage in Dearborn, and she's indicated that it's her position to, that as long as you can drive through it, the city makes it drivable, you should take care of the rest. That's a question of good citizenry. If you want to move further, then the second plan would be for funding it. I would recommend to Council, if you have specific questions, specific instances, and if there's a gross nuisance that the city should look at, then you raise that with the city manager, but to adopt a hierarchical overall policy, you're going to get in some invidious discrimination which alley you picked to clean first. And I have nothing else to say, that was a long-winded sentence. Thank you, Mayor. They have questions, I'll answer, but you're running out of time.
I'm of the belief that we still need to have the session. I drove down the Southfield alleys east of, east of Fort this afternoon, and by and large, most are in good shape, but some are just deplorable, what is out there, as far as debris that's left behind and such. So we definitely need to do a cleanup. So we have, everyone that is, that is here, or I would suggest that we carry over the alley study session until the next council meeting, I realize that we already have something on tap for that also, but, Carrie, what do we have set up for the next, next meeting?
We actually have two things on for the next meeting, hang on, I'm grabbing my sheet.
The building department study?
Yeah. Well, there's a, we have the study session on the sweepers, and then there's a resolution on tonight's meeting to schedule a special meeting at 6:00 to discuss the building department operations. So you could add that into the one that's on the next, the resolution to add this to that.
My suggestion would be the first meeting in October then.
Okay. So we can do a resolution at the regular meeting to set that?
Yeah, I would suggest that, because I think you're going to need an hour, hour to do that, and give an opportunity to have some citizens join us also, and business people, because half of the alleys are going to have to be done by them too. And we'll have the information back from the, from the judge at that particular... Everyone could mute their, there you go. Okay, then, there being no further business for the study session, we will, do we need, it's adjourned at 7:27. I don't need a motion, right? Correct? All right. Very good, and we'll be back in three minutes.